Good evening, everyone. It's 5:15 and I'd like to call the work session to meeting to start. We're gonna start out with a
Yes.
Motion. Hold on, hold on. On January 25th, 2023, I received a request from Councilor Arrowood to participate remotely in the regular portion of the city council meeting due to a temporary medical condition that prevents his physical attendance. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Arrowood to remote participate in the regular meeting pursuant to city, Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three.
Mayor Claffey. Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure, member number three, I move to allow Councilor Arrowood to remotely participate in the January 26, 2023 Stanton City Council Meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
A motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Very much. Mr. Kessinger, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will ask you at the regular meeting if we can hear you and we will arrange our communication at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're glad to have you for the work session and we're gonna miss you at the regular session.
You'll see me on the, on TV.
Very good. And at this point, I will take a consideration of approval of the agendas.
Okay. Mayor Claffey, I move to amend the regular meeting agenda to add item H reconsideration of December 8th, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Very good. All right. Yeah, you better.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's true.
That December 8th.
December 8th meeting, he was not present.
Well, Mr. He, Mr. Arrowood can make the motion, can second the motion to amend the agenda.
To amend it. Thank you very much. All right. So at this point, are we ready to amend it? All right. The amendment has been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Now, can we consider the work session and regular meeting agendas? All right, so. Rest of it is presented.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agendas now as presented.
With the addition.
With the addition of item H for reconsideration.
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for bearing with us through our little bit of logistics. I would like to welcome the school board at this time because they're present tonight and we're going to have a joint school board city council budget and I believe you all have to call your meeting to order at this point. So I recognize the chair, Tasha McCurtain. Would you like to introduce all your members, please? Very good. Well, welcome and we're glad to have you all here tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Beauregard.
So yeah, we do kick off our budget. One of our kickoff work sessions is a joint work session with the school board and I'll introduce Dr. Garrett Smith, Superintendent of Schools, and they have a brief presentation and will be some room at the end for questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Beauregard. Good evening, Mayor Claffey, members of city council. I'd also like to point out that our Shelburne Middle School Principal Lisa Warren is in attendance tonight as well.
Welcome.
I didn't want to overlook that. So I'm going to give kind of a brief overview of the school's budget. And then we have Josh Bauer, who's our architect from Crabtree Roar Barn Associates, and he's gonna give an overview of the construction projects that we're working on currently in the schools and and as, as Ms. Beauregard said, I think we should have some time for questions at the end. So I just want to start off by saying we do plan to bring a balanced budget to city council this year. We appreciate the new operational funding formula. It's working. It'll take us a couple of more years to get back to where we were pre-pandemic, but we're, we're back on the right trajectory. Now, we're heading in the right direction again and we really appreciate the city support and city and school staff worked collaboratively on that operational funding formula and again, we really do appreciate it. So our big highlights for the budget this year, the number one priority is a 5% raise for staff in the governor's biennial budget. Last year it called for a 10% raise over two years. We were able to give a six, squeezed out a 6% raise last year trying to keep up with our neighbors in Waynesboro and Augusta gave 7% raises last year. And we would like to do the 5% raise. So that's our number one priority for this year's budget. The game field has really changed. You know, we used to get a biennial budget that called for a 5% raise over two years and you could kind of do two and three or three and two. But now it's a 10% raise and I'm starting to wonder if that's gonna be standard practice because teacher salaries in the state of Virginia continue to lag far behind our other states. You'll see in, in the data where Virginia is one of the wealthiest 10 states, you know, in the, in the country for, by household income and still our pay is, you know, close to about 40. So it's really out of whack. So, and that is something that, you know, I'm sure our state legislators are talking about now, but as far as this budget, it was a 10% over two years. So we've got to meet our obligation in order to get the state share of that money. So that's our number one priority. Number two is we need to add a teacher at McSwain Elementary due to enrollment growth and that'll be a teacher at the fifth grade level. So our schools continue to be pretty full and but we, and we'll figure out, you know, where we're gonna fit that teacher. There's not any extra classrooms at McSwain, but we're working on a plan right now to, to do that. We want to raise wages for our lowest paid employees and right now that those are our bus agents and school nutrition workers. Try to get them to a decent wage so we can keep those positions filled. And then one of the biggest challenges for me right now is we have to restructure the whole student services side of the house due to Dr. Jalisa Wolf's retirement. I don't know if you guys were aware that Dr. Wolf is retiring at the end of the year. She's worn several hats for several years here in Stanton City Schools and we're not gonna be able to replace her with just one person. You know, cause she's over the preschool, she's over special education, she's over student services. So I'm still trying to navigate that challenge right now. So we'll continue to work through that. But again, we plan to come with a balanced budget to city council. One way or the other, we're gonna make it work. We know the parameters that we have to work within and we'll get there. So as far as projects, Ms. Beauregard has asked for estimated cost for each of the three phases and we do have three phases of school projects. The first is the CTE classroom spaces at Shelburne. That includes the spaces in the basement that many of you have seen. Where the maintenance shop was, we're turning that back into classrooms as well as the spaces right above that. The total cost and you'll see from Mr. Bauer some drawings today. The total cost for that is estimated to be about three and a half million dollars. A collaborative learning space, which is actually an addition, which will be on the right side of Shelburne. If you were facing the front, it'd be on the side closer to Ware and off of the Hearne Gym. The estimated cost for that is $6 million. And finally, the, we're looking at a property on the edge of town. We've discussed that before for a consolidated operations facility and the estimated cost for that is about $11 million. So that's one of the reasons why we pushed so hard for building 126 because we had the funding to get that done and get well within our budget. We have about eight and a half million dollars right now allocated for these projects. And, and that's kind of where we are as far as total costs. And if you need me to go through it again, I can. I see some people taking notes. Do you want me to go through it again? Or is everybody?
$3 million for the Shelburne addition. You have $6 million for the Shelburne Gym?
$6 million for the addition, three and a half for the CTE classroom spaces.
You're at nine, five right there?
Nine, five right there.
And then 11 for the new property?
Yes. And that's including the, that's, and we're purchasing that, the land out there as well.
The six for the, the classroom spaces, that's just for the, that's for more open, like open area for students and
Yeah.
It's not like if people hear classroom, they're thinking actual like
Yeah.
A classroom, but it's not that.
The CTE spaces are the actual classrooms. That's the three and a half. The collaborative learning spaces in addition that could fit like a grade level at a time. It can be a community space. We're trying to make a flexible space right there. And again, I think it'll become clearer when Josh starts showing the drawings. But we'll be here to answer questions too. Feel free to ask questions during his presentation or after and we'll be there to answer them. And then the purchase of the land and then the consolidated operations facility was estimated at about $11 million. So we have submitted a term sheet to the landowner for 58 acres on the edge of town. We haven't heard back yet. We, we submitted that last week and we're waiting to hear back from the landowner. And as always, we're still willing to partner with the city to help address any space needs that the city has and always looking for a win-win solution. It benefits the entire Stanton community. And then before I introduce Mr. Bauer, I just want to, if it's helpful, offer tours to city council. I'd like to take you to see at Shelburne what these spaces would look like. Also, we can show you the Evers property, which is kind of our temporary placement for our maintenance shop right now. And our buses are actually getting worked on undercover over there. So our maintenance guys are doing all their regular work and, and also moving into the Evers property at the same time. Be happy to show you the land acquisition site and also just do a, we can do a tour of all the schools if you want. We had an excellent tour on Monday with the entire school board of all the schools and happy to do it if anyone's interested. So please let me know and we'll take you up on that. And I'm going to now introduce Josh Bauer and he's gonna kind of give an overview of our projects and a, and a timeline.
Before you, Josh, you get, I just wanna ask. We go over the Evers. I want, I want to look at the two old trucks, you know, I'm an old car guy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if they're still there. Mr. Evers might have moved.
Oh, they were, oh, dang on.
Yeah, he's got all kinds of cool stuff over there. Yeah.
Just a question. I just want to make sure I did go to Stanton City Schools. I can actually do my math. You had talked about, you know, Governor Yonkin, you know, did do the 10%, but so actually what you're, from what you're mad, what you were talking about, so Stanton is shooting for 11%?
Yes.
All right, cause you, I mean, yeah, cause you.
Yeah, it was actually Governor Northam's budget that that got put into, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so you, 11%.
Yeah, that's what we're shooting for. Okay, any other questions before I turn it over to Josh? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for taking your time out of your busy schedule. I was asked to keep this brief, so we're gonna keep it under three hours.
We're used to that kind of timeline.
So I am Josh Power with Crabtree Global Architects and we're pleased to be able to give this presentation. The school board and the staff have been working very, very hard to get us to this point. We still have a lot of design left to go. From overall phasing, we're about the end of schematic design. So there's really kind of three phases of design, schematic design, design development, construction documents. And so we're wrapping up to schematic design. So the drawings that you see are still at the schematic level. But as we, you know, as we move forward, you know, that they will begin to become construction documents and be able to give them to a contractor for them to be able to build it. So, okay, so we're gonna, hopefully if all goes well, oh, it goes fast. Okay. Really fast. Okay. So this is the existing building. Again, for those who may or may not be familiar with Shelburne Middle School, it is a two-story building. And one small portion is actually three stories and let's see if the mouse actually works and it does not. So the, the blue area kind of in the top, this is where the lower floor plan set is. That's a two-story space. As, as Dr. Smith said earlier, the, that is actually the lower floor plan was, was maintenance. They're almost moved out. I think they're about 95% moved out of the space. What's interesting about it is it was in 1984, they moved in temporarily. And so 1984 and they moved out about three weeks ago. So if you do the math, it's been a little more than temporary. But the good news is that they, they have, Earl has moved his operations out. And, you know, we are looking to convert this, this space into CTE slash STEM space. STEM is science, technology, engineering and math with, and then CTE is more focused on, on the trade. So what we're, what our goals are is to make these to prep them for high school, you know, is, is really the goal is it is more interest-based, you know, exploratory focus on for, for these spaces. So we're gonna be running both the upper and lower and we'll get them more detail. And then as, as Dr. Smith said, we're looking at doing an addition on the Ware Elementary side. And so if you're, if you're familiar with the two buildings, they're, they're adjacent to one another, Shelburne and Ware are adjacent. We're putting in addition essentially right in the center of that is what our plan is. Okay, so this is the, the first floor of the main floor. So if you enter in the, if you join us for a for a walkthrough of the building, I'd love for you to do that because it's a fantastic building. The, Lisa, the building principal has done a great job in her, in her short tenure so far in, in getting the school ready for the, ready for the school year. And so if you're on the main floor, you can actually walk onto, onto the space. Right now, there's actually three, there's three kind of exploratory labs there and what our goal is, is to convert one of them into a robotics lab. So that would be in the top left-hand corner and then to do two new science labs. And, and the goal of science labs is all spaces to make them as flexible as possible. So for those of us who went to science class at least once, you know, we either had classrooms or we have labs. And if you have a lab, it's not a great classroom and if you have a classroom, it's not a great lab. So one of the things that we found is just taking a little bit out of the box and giving them lab tables on casters and casters are on rollers and allowing them to move over. So around the perimeter of the room is where your, your cabinetry, your, your sinks are. And then what they could do is be either be in classroom road, classroom mode like you see here. Or in lab mode where the students could actually move the tables over. So really this, this design gives the best of both worlds and makes the room flexible. Also, if there's an experiment and there's a physics experiment and they really want to be able to open up the room, they can slide the tables off to the side and make it very, very friendly for whatever the experiments are. Now, some super exciting things about this space is not only do we have high volume space and we have a lot of opportunity for collaboration. One of the exciting things is that we, we are looking at doing two outdoor covered spaces. So I'm gonna jump to a section here, maybe? To a section. So this is a section through the building and which you can see here is both on the, on the lower level and on the upper level, there's outdoor spaces for students. And while we don't want to make them enclosed, what we want to do is put a cover over top of them. So if it's robotics or science on the upper level or if it's the, the technology or business lab on the lower level or any, any other students in the building want to be able to use a covered outdoor space, this is really what we're looking for. And so we're, we're gonna be able to do that simply by just doing a little bit of structure and create a canopy over that for, for different types of outdoor activities. Go back. So again, that is the goal. A couple of things is that one is we want to make, as we're making adjustments to the building is we want to make sure that everything is accessible, friendly. And that is for a student that, that may be in a wheelchair, that may be in a walker, that may be hearing or vision impaired. We want to make all the spaces as friendly for students as possible. Regardless of what physical challenges they may possibly have. So we were, we are gonna be adding an elevator. Right now, there is no elevator to get down to that lower level. So as part of this project, we'll be having an elevator to go down to the lower level. Also, we're gonna be modifying the stairs. If you get a chance to walk through and, and walk, there's a, they do have a current stair. I think they, they, they use that for the Harry Potter design as you go through, cause you kind of keep walking around and hopefully you get to the bottom. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna be modifying that for, for ease and also a better visibility for, for students and teachers in the space. So and again, that's happening on the upper level as we go to the, as we go to the lower level. Again, you have, see the elevator and the stairs on left-hand side where the yellow is. What we're looking to do is do a business lab on the, on the, on the kind of the bottom side, the plant south. And then a technology lab on the upper side. So let's talk about business. This is one of the really, really exciting spaces because the business teacher at the middle school is fantastic. Some of the things that she does is just wonderful, including running the school store. We've been talking more and more about some spaces that we can, that we can utilize, put display cases to be able to sell goods that, that her students actually make. They can talk about not only the manufacturing of it, but then also how do they sell and get other students really excited about the program and also having goods that, that are specific to Shelburne Middle School. Also, some things that she's asked for is to have more like a, a workable cubicle workstation, stations for the students. They can go in groups of two or three. And then in the left-hand side is actually gonna be her, her boardroom, boardroom space. And that space that can not only be utilized by the business lab, but also by any students who want to be able to get a small group together. It'll be very technology friendly with, with smart boards and projectors and have the ability for that board to be, the boardroom to be flexible. On the top side, that would be the technology lab. So this is kind of what you think of more project-based, you know, where they're gonna have CNC lathes and, and drill presses and, you know, and, and the idea here is that students are gonna be, have both the design and the construction side. For those of us who are super construction nerds, that makes me really excited to have that opportunity for the students. So also this is gonna be on that outside with the have covered awning. We're gonna have some, some, some friendly storage areas because one of the things that the teacher was, was sharing with us is that there's plenty of opportunities for folks to donate wood and other materials. And he goes, Josh, can you please create space that, that as folks come and say, hey, we have a pallet of two-by-fours, which if you go to buy them, they're like $6 apiece right now. But if we have a pallet of two-by-fours, we'd love to donate. And often I'm over talking myself. Often the challenge is
Give him some water.
No, thank you. The, the challenge is where to place it. So, also we're focusing on storage also. So, so we want to make this very technology-friendly thing.
Just say yes.
So the so said the, so we're really looking at, at five labs. On the lower level, technology and business and on the upper level is gonna be robotics and science. Going back to that section. So this is a section, this shows kind of the volume. My goodness, I cannot talk.
That's okay. Should we ask questions? Maybe now?
You can.
Okay.
Can you go back to the big overview? We can see where this fits on to the
Yeah.
That, yes. So this is all new construction?
No, sir. This is actually renovation.
Oh, so what is there currently?
So right now on the on the upper level are three labs. So the challenge with the current labs is that there's, there's really not a whole of daylight. The, they're not flexible and you actually, in order to get to the one lab, you have to walk through one, you have to walk through a lab to get there because it's, it was actually kind of an adjacent space to it. So what, one of our goals as part of this project is to make sure that all three labs have a front door and students don't have to go through one lab to get to another.
And the covered portico faces out towards, was that Morris Mill Road?
Morris Mill Road, yes.
So the, the blue areas right now, basically we did the tour are on the backside. That's where they were doing, they used to have the, underneath there, we went down and they were doing the Earl was had his
Yes, sir.
So all, the blue area now is going to be labs and perfect. Okay.
And, and some things.
You won't be on the homes.
Yeah, and the goal was to try to make the space that is already your lab friendly to make it, make it friendly for the students to be able to use.
Excuse me, Josh, is there only, you're only putting in the one elevator? Is there currently an elevator from the first to the second floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There is a, the, the, the only place that we really is, is not fully accessible is where maintenance was. So because there was no elevator to get to it, but yes, there already is an elevator, which is right in the corner of the caf. So if you walk in the building, caf is on your left and then the elevator is right there.
Josh, one more. So the yellow area, that, well, the yellow and purple over here, is that where, when we did the tour, that's where like a lot of the HVAC and some of those big generators were or am I totally? That's even further back. Okay.
Yes, let me grab.
That's a stairwell area. Yeah.
On the lower level, the mechanical equipment is right there. There's also a there's some mechanical equipment that's located right in this space here.
Okay.
So if you, if you come in the front door, which is here, you walk down the cafeterias on your left-hand side, the elevator is right there. That will take you up to the second floor. You're coming down, you have band of music on your left. There's, and then
Excuse me, can you go to the mic? Cause there's people online probably can't hear you. I apologize. Thank you.
Focus on the mic. Can't see my, can't see a red dot either.
Oh, yeah.
So, so as you come down, then it said, this is all really one level. There's sort of ramping to get down to the space. This is currently three labs and then as you go, as you go downstairs, then this is the, where maintenance was occupying and there's that white area right there is, is a current and a future mechanical room. We have no intentions at this point of making that, making that change.
Well, maybe you've gone, I got there yet. There'll all be a big yellow space here that you just haven't got there yet or?
Correct. So we'll talk about the addition. So this is the addition. So this is existing gymnasium. Actually, we have two gyms that are, that are side by side, the main stage. And this is the, there, so there is a entrance. If you've gone to a basketball game, this is typically where the bat, where the entrance is for the basketball game along with a couple of boys or girls potties right there. Okay, so, and we can certainly go back at any time and go over and go over any space that we desire. So this is the cafeteria. So one of the, some, some of the challenges with the cafeteria, especially as we experienced COVID was there was simply not enough space in there and even having multiple lunches the, with the current dining tables and the amount of space, it, it just simply is not enough for the students. Round tables are awesome because in round tables, everybody's collaborating, the students don't have to yell. Back when we were students, at least most of us, we had rectilinear tables. And if you wanted to talk to Johnny or Suzie on the other side of the table, you were screaming and it made everything louder. So we've, you know, so we've kind of do a hybrid of, of smaller square tables and round tables with this current, with this layout that we're showing here. There's about 352 seats, which would be enough to, to comfortably have three lunches. And then also give them more opportunity for, for student learning when there's not breakfast or lunchtime. What you may or may not notice is that the, one of the things that is happening right now is the demolition of the existing platform that's there. So that was a stage back in the day. And the, when the new gymnasium was built, that's where all of the performances and, and, and assemblies are happening. So this stage is really not being used. So, so actually Earl's team is right now demoing it and creating more usable space for the, you know, for the seats. And then we're talking with a couple of different vendors about, about purchasing the, the new tables and chairs for, for the dining room to make it said more conducive with a, a larger number of students be able to sit in the space. Okay, now this is the super exciting part. Okay, so so this 3D rendering shows where the addition would happen. So this is for the new collaborative learning space. So, so again, if you can see the, the, the middle school is on the right-hand side. This is actually that CTE space that we were just talking about. Down here is the road that will take you down to Morris Mill. And so, so this is that two-story CTE STEM space. So we'd be looking at putting the place in the addition right here in between Ware Elementary and Shelburne Middle School. So if you, if you've been there, the, right now there is a, there's a greenhouse that's located right in that space. The teacher is super excited because what, you know, when we're doing this, this project, we're actually gonna be able to move the greenhouse down closer to, to his operation to make it much more integral to his, the student program cause it is quite a bit of distance from where he's located out to where the greenhouse is. So some important things about this and let's go to a next shot. Yes. So this, so this view is, you know, so here's the, the main drive where the buses drop off. The parking lot down here, there's a little bit of an elevation increase. I know that in Stanton, we have elevation increases. It's crazy. And so the, so, so this is the main drive for, for the buses. So what we're proposing to do is place the addition right here with having its own separate entrance to the addition. What's important for the school division and for this community is to have spaces. What is what was not super awesome is the number of facilities where we could fit a large groups on the western side. There's so many great spaces here in the city, but on the western side, there's just, it's just not as prevalent as we would like it to be. So what can we do to do a project, to have a project that is, that is both successful for students during the day, in the evening, but then also be able to, to open up this to community groups in the evenings and on the weekends where they're not being utilized by students and do all this very safely. So those are some, some of the goals that we had as we're developing this, developing this space. So those are some some of the goals that we had as we're developing this, developing this space.
Josh, I have a question.
Currently, it's a little deceiving, but it's a pretty good grade to go from the sidewalk into where you enter the gym. Especially, I mean, you know, for someone that maybe is elderly and is on a walker, wheelchair is different story. But what's gonna is that how's that gonna be with this new?
So so we will make it accessible. It'll be fully accessible. And what we're going to have to probably end up doing is is go up and then have a landing and then go up and have a landing, even though in this in the sketch, you know, it shows it being flat, but we would have, we would have the the 100% goal of this is every new space and every space we touch is to make it fully accessible. So yes, it is a little bit of a steep grade. We are going to be doing some regrading there because and one of the things that we're doing is taking advantage of it on the back side, and you'll see that in a minute. Does that answer your question? Okay. So as we go from the outside to the inside. So this is that sidewalk. This is that sidewalk that brings you up, and what you'll see here is is a small vestibule. And this is really for an airlock. You've been enough spaces where you're in a space and somebody opens his door, like a restaurant, you know, and all of a sudden it goes from 70 degrees to 10 degrees inside of your space. So so this vestibule is 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 very climate friendly. And then also, it's it is required by code. So one of the things that we're looking to do is create a new large lobby space. And this lot so is as an example, if you've been in the building, this is the existing lobby right here. So it's it's a a little bit smaller. And so a couple of things we're going to be doing is is as I said, A, making a larger lobby, and then also increasing the size of the men's, women's, boys and girls' potties that are right here. Because we want to make sure is that this facility can run by itself. You know, that when if if somebody's utilizing this after hours, whether it's, you know, or whether it's during the evening or or on the weekend, and it's an outside group or it's a student group, is that you don't have to wander through the school to be able to utilize this facility. So so really, with one, two doors, we can close off the entire rest of the building from from this space. So the goal here was so we'd have a separate entrance, a large lobby space, access to the to the existing toilet rooms, we're going to be making a little bit larger concessions. So the concessions, if you've been to the high school, which by the way is really awesome. If you've been to the high school, that we're looking at about the same size as the concessions at the high school. So large enough that you can serve food, it's not cooking, you know, the goal here is serving. So if but that includes hot dog warmers, if you like hot dogs. So we're looking concessions. Some really cool features about this is that we want to make this space as flexible as possible for multiple uses. So what we're proposing to do is make this wall here, which is kind of the back of the performance area, to be a folding partition. And what that means is that that wall can fold back and open up to the lobby. So if you have a larger group, if you have an ensemble band or something that's happening, you can actually open that entire space up the lobby and make this, you know, and make it a bigger performance area. And really, take away the constraints that we could have. Some other features is that we have a corridor that will go down to be able, so the way folks are not walking through the performance area to be able to get to the seating. And also, this will access the back of the storage room. As 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 Amy was saying earlier, that there are some grade challenges. And so what can we do to take advantage of those great challenges? So as as we're meeting with the teachers and they said, Josh, can you make some improvements on this? And one of the things is the current stage. So it's what's a great sized stage, and you have a huge area there for the gym. They said, two things we don't have is is we don't have storage rooms, you know, a large storage room off the back of the stage. And we also don't have a dressing room and potties off the off of the back anywhere in in that space. The students actually have to go to where the public is, and it's just just not super awesome for performances. So we'll show you a section here in a minute, but off of the back of the stage, as part of this addition, we're going to be able to have a large storage room and also boys and girls, men's, women's dressing rooms. So that way that the this the performers can go off the back, be able to get changed, come back onto the stage without having to go and mix with the public as so looking at a performance. Stanton is you guys are so great at so many things here in Stanton. One of the things is performing arts, and if we can start the enhancement of the performing arts at the middle school, at the middle level, why would we not take advantage of it? So so I said, we'll show you a section on why this works and how we're making the grade of the of the space work with that. So we have a a large performance area. And then we have the we have a seating that is on two different levels that we'll show you here in a second. So now, as we go up, this this shows you now an upper higher level performance area. And then we'll have seating here, and then you have steps to go up to the upper, and then we have seating kind of the second tier. We're looking at a total of 325 seats. And and what's important is is that we were going through the programming is we want to make sure that we get fit and we had enough there for eighth entire class. So all those sixth, all those seventh or all the eighth grade could fit in this space at one time, you know, for an assembly, for activity. You know, and this with with 300 seats, this makes it very, very flexible. So this is a section through the space. So so going from left to right, we're going to start off at the at the secure vestibule. And now you can see the lobby space, which is here, the toilet room is just off in the distance. This is that folding partition that would be able to open to allow the performing space to be able to open up to that lobby. And then we will have either bleacher or fix or a chair style seating. We're still working through that piece. On a first tier, you see a landing and then a second tier. This is that storage, which is actually below the fixed seating area. And then off to the back here would be that the toilet rooms. So this is where it gets super, super exciting. Because one of the things you're talking about is, okay, that's that's awesome for a performance, but what can we do to truly make this space as flexible as possible? So what we proposed is having these seats as a bleacher style seats that can fold back. And now what you can do is have this entire area and the entire lobby for for a science fair, for other activities that are going on and really have a large, there's there's not a fantastic amount of floor area available for it, you know, for student and outdoor functions in this space.
We toured a school that had something like this. I was just remembering back to years before, but I I don't remember which one it was. Do you all remember?
It may have been Clark County.
It was really neat.
It might have been Clark County High School.
It was either Fluvan or Clark. I couldn't remember which one.
Yeah, Fluvan has a beautiful auditorium. I don't recall them having any bleacher seating, but I said, it might have been Clark County, might have been Chambersburg. We've we've visited a lot of schools. So so said, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to make these as this space as multi-use, as flexible as possible for the students and for the community, regardless of what the what the time is. What's awesome about this is that this could be a day function because with the closing of two doors, this space can be closed off from the rest of the building. So I said, from a safety standpoint of students, you said before and after school, so we can make this really, really flexible for everybody. And I think that is the last image. So the so 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 these are some of our goals. This is to renovate the CTE in the STEM area. Those are renovations, and then we're looking at this as an addition to the building. I said, but with this with with the goal is to make this student and community friendly. So are there any questions? I know we just kind of ran through some.
Questions?
Kind of timeline, we're talking from beginning to end, what it takes to accomplish something like this and then the other one?
Great question. So when we're looking at these spaces, we're looking about six months, six months for the design. Because we've, we've already made a lot of progress. And so now we're going to take it from the idea concept and not making construction documents so that the the contractor can can actually build it. So what's nice about the addition is the addition can happen during school. Is that the it's really going to have a limited impact on on the students because of being addition with the and we're we're thinking it's going to be about eight to 10 months to be able to build the addition, you know, from start to finish. When we're looking at the renovation, so the there are classes on the there, there are multiple classes on that upper level of the of the CTE STEM space. The the nice about that where maintenance is vacated, so we can actually start the renovation of that lower space. Whenever, you know, as soon as we get done with the drawings, we put it out to bid, get a contractor on board is that we can start that renovation of that lower space. And and what we could do then is is when school lets out over the summer, for the summer of of 24, summer of 25, whatever the the schedule fits, is that then we can renovate that upper level, you know, because all the materials will be ordered. And everything will be onsite for us to be able to go and renovate that. So so looking at the at the CTE space, total time, we're looking about six months to be able to renovate both the lower and the upper level for that. So.
Any other questions?
I just want to remind council, if if you have forgotten or not aware, Josh, as with the company that was really, he took the lead on our high school. So, you know, we can all see how beautiful that is and what an asset it is. So it's good to have you back in Stanton.
Thank you. We have some really talented designers on my staff. I'd love to take credit for it, but I just happen to be the face. So.
Closing comments, Garrett.
Just just seeing if anybody had any any other questions about anything that we discussed tonight.
Form to Garrett.
Garrett, can you tell me again, you said when you were talking about the numbers that you have eight and a half allocated?
Eight and a half right now. We think we'll have some carryover too that we can put towards these projects. And we're working on that with the with the city finance. So we think we can actually put more towards it than the eight and a half. I think we can get closer to nine and a half. Yeah.
I do. What is the timeline? So you have three, three projects that you're looking at. What would be the timeline that you're looking to have those?
So the the school renovations are in front of any consolidated operation facility. You know, this is the this is the priority. And like you heard Josh say, the, you know, we could start next summer. The thing about the the CTE spaces, it would be advantageous if there are no children in the building. We can get a lot more done more quickly with this, with the additional space here. Then we can work on that even while there are children in the building. So a little more flexibility there, but we could those could kind of happen simultaneously, you know, school year 24, 25. That would be kind of be our target.
How long is the lease agreement with Evers?
It's two years with an option for a third.
Along those lines, the operations facility on the edge of town, would that one actually be adequate to be fully used by it? Or would you guys still be storing school buses over Public Works?
No, no, but that's a great question, Brad. That would be, that would be transportation, maintenance. We would also, you know, one of the big attractions of Building 126 for those walk-in refrigerators and freezers, you all remember that and dry storage spaces. So we would want to have some of those spaces too. It'll save us money on storing and transporting food, and we'd be able to buy food in bulk. And also space for our technology department. So we think we could, we could put just about, you know, everything we need. And then there wouldn't be any more deliveries to schools at that point. All of the so, you know, you see that early in the morning, and sometimes it's problematic. All the deliveries would go to this one site, and that would be like our distribution center for everything we you know, get stuff out to schools from there. So it'd really be a kind of like an all in one operations facility.
Okay.
And and really, I mean, some of it was just seeing the building 126 and some of the features that we wish we had, and we're going to try to incorporate that into this facility.
Okay, but not something you feel you'd grow immediately?
No, no, not at all. Not at all. And in fact, you know, we think, you know, with 58 acres, we did a facility, and there's still plenty of space if we ever Stanton City Schools ever needs to, you know, build another school, so our population grows, we'd have extra, you know, we'd have room to do that. So it'd really be thinking towards the future.
Yeah, I'd rather yeah, overbuild than build twice. Yeah. So, okay, thank you.
As far as as far as the cold and the dry storage, I know we talked about when we were looking at Building 126. You said there was the possibility, if we'd had that, that you could, there was enough space there to not only take care of Stanton City, but you could rent out to Waynesburg County. Is this facility, it's big enough, or you plan on building cold storage that could possibly rent and even make money for?
Yeah, Mr. McCray and his team have already purchased a refrigerated trailer. They got up and running because even things like the ice storm yesterday, you know, when when power goes out in schools, we can't let the food go bad. So we've ended up in past years having to rent refrigerated trailers and moving the food to the refrigerated trailers in the middle of an ice storm until we get the power back up. And then we got to move it back in. So we'll have our own refrigerated trailer we've already bought, we can have out on the site. And then we've got the old refrigerator and freezer units from Lee High School too that are still functional, and we can bring them back to life too over there. So we think we have a significant, significant amount of storage space for food.
Where are they stored now?
Shoot, those things are, I think they're at Public Works.
I think Building 126 was on a five acre track?
It was, yeah, it was about five acres, five or six acres.
You're talking a 50 acre track.
Right, that's
You got enough room there for?
Oh, yeah, there's a, there is a lot of room there. Yeah, and it's pasture land. So, you know, one of the things we ran into at Evers is we did the environmental study and phase one of the environmental study, we found out that there are underground tanks and, you know, and that's
How many acres are there at Evers?
That's about seven. We were looking at about seven. Now, the part we're leasing now isn't the whole seven. We've got like three of the lots and that workshop, which again, I'll be happy to give you a tour, but we're painting it, putting the lights in, heating it. And, you know, our guys are mostly over there all day working. They've done some miraculous things over the last few months.
All right, well, it's six o'clock. We're running a little late already, but we want to thank the school board for coming tonight. And always a pleasure to see y'all. So come back anytime.
All right. Thank you very much for having us. We appreciate it.
See, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Adjourned.
Is anyone gonna stay? I guess the rest is boring.
Natasha, you can't let our people say here the word adjourned because they'll run for the doors too. Y'all have a great night. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion of amendments to Stanton City Code Regulations of Open Burning.
Deputy Fire Marshal Perry Weller is here, and this item tonight is just for discussion and questions. It will be added to a regular agenda, most likely the next meeting for consideration. So this is just discussion this evening.
Thank you and welcome.
Good evening. I think if you recall, some of you recall, a couple of months ago, originally brought this up, we had to Mr. Blair and I came up with some new code language, which had to be sent to the State Air Pollution and Control Board. On November 9th, we finally received a letter from them approving the proposed amendments. So now we have to bring it back to council and open up for public comments to get some input and whether we want to adopt the new newly proposed amendments to the ordinance. So for the the new three new ones, what happened is over the years, our open burning ordinance hasn't really changed much. The fire department has seen an increase in calls for unauthorized burns. So people are burning things that they shouldn't be burning, where we're burning things they shouldn't be where they shouldn't be. So we're just trying to clarify some of the language, because if you look at the current ordinance, some of the definitions there are rather confusing. So Mr. Blair and I, we've been through, and I think he's done an excellent job of updating a lot of those definitions to where we don't have three and four different definitions of what trash is. So we're kind of simplifying it and making it easier for people to understand. So we don't have to field as many questions about what the actual code is and what it means. There's also some updated language to increase some of the distances and just really clarify what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Sir, can I ask you a question about that? I know there was some language, and I can't find it right now. There's 106 pages, but one of the one of the sentences I read was that if you have the approval of your neighbors, you can burn in a closer distance. I think it was maybe 100 feet, but if your neighbor said it was okay, and they were 50 feet away, you could go ahead and burn.
Yeah. So what it is is that's that's try to eliminate some of the complaints, because what we did now is people will they'll obtain a permit. And they forget the little, the the little thing about they say, oh, yeah, we have permission from the neighbors. So we really want to hone in on making sure they actually have talked with the neighbors and got permission that that they're burning closer, because a lot of people concerned, well, I just don't think it's far enough away from my house, their house. And that's what a lot of complaints are. They just don't feel that it's far enough away. So that would just clarify that if we're neighbors, I've talked to you, and you're okay with me burning my pile of whatever sticks and whatnot to get rid of, that that it's not, shouldn't be an issue.
I just played that out with with something, let's just say, Mr. Kessaker is my neighbor, and he said, oh, sure, Michelle, go ahead and burn whatever you want. And I start to burn it. And he gives me permission, but lo and behold, some of the ash goes over and starts to burn his house down. Because I had permission, am I still liable? I mean, you know, I'm I'm wondering about liability.
We would obviously come out and address it.
Okay.
Like, hey, and it happens all the time. The wind will change direction. And and that's where a lot of our complaints come in. The wind will be blown one way when somebody starts to burn, then it shifts, and then ash is going all everywhere. So then we got to play the mediator between between neighbors and try to say, hey, do the right thing, put it out, let's wait for another day.
Approximately, how many times a year does this occur? How how many violations do we have last year?
On average.
Williams just ran away. He didn't want to tell us how many times he had got.
From 2017 to From two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty-two, the average is about twenty-six, twenty-seven times a year.
Every two weeks.
So we've had a, from two thousand seventeen till the end of twenty twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-three unauthorized burns. So we had a total of a hundred and sixty-some, so a hundred, about a hundred and seventy. So only forty, had forty-nine that were actually okay under the ordinance, the current ordinance, but a hundred and twenty-three of them were not.
And are they fined?
Um, we, we tried to be kinder and gentler and give them a warning, saying, hey, you're violating the code. If they become repeat offenders, then obviously we, we address a little bit more seriously. But most people that we encounter like, I just moved here from the county. I had no idea I couldn't do this. Or I'm new to the area. I didn't know. So we always say, well, it's always a good idea to call the fire department ahead of time to find out what the regulations are. And we do have some people do that, but majority, it's because people are just unaware of what the actual ordinance is.
And am I correct? It's a misdemeanor if you come out and.
Yeah, it can elevate to that level. I mean, obviously we, we have, we can give a verbal warning. We can give a written warning in, in the, what's called a notice of violation under the Fire Prevention Code. Or then you can, if it's serious enough, that we can actually issue a summons to court.
So would it be, let's say, if something was posted? Because you know, before you dig, they want you to call before you dig and hit some piping, you know, electric, I mean, gas. So would that be something that could be posted or in somewhere where before you burn? Just, just make sure you check with.
That is the one thing we have not been able to figure out how to best accomplish is how do we make everyone aware? You can put it on social media. However, not everyone has social media. So therefore that's when it becomes a problem. I mean, there, we can explore some options, but I know we have put some things on social media before trying to make people aware there are certain things happening in the area. Still doesn't stop the complaints, just more people are aware that it's happening. But yeah, so we really haven't figured out the best way to go about it. But obviously, social media is one method of being able to put some of the, hey, this is a new rules that are going in effect. So maybe a note on the bottom of a utility bill or something. But most people get their bills. They just want to see how much they owe and don't really read much else on there from my experience. So.
In looking at the distances involved in the setbacks on this, I mean, it looks like it, most, most lots in the city or most, most entire properties in the city, like you just could not do any open burning, you know, on it and that. Is this primarily done in the Ag Forestal districts or?
That's what the, the main changes are, is make it just more for the Ag Forestal districts. A lot of our complaint obviously come out of the residential areas. It would still allow industrial areas. However, those would be like during construction projects. But it changes the language where they would have to dig a trench. They would have to use an incinerator to help reduce the amount of ash that's produced and smoke that's produced. So that's what a lot of the complaints are, is the smoke and ash. So if they dig the trench and use the, the incinerator, then that should reduce that tremendously. But if, if you're in another area, it gives you a little bit more wiggle room that where you can burn as long as you're meeting the distance requirements.
Okay.
That makes sense.
That does. It just sounds like, you know, in a, in a construction situation, the pain of getting an incinerator and, and all of that is almost makes it more worthwhile to haul it to the landfill.
It's cost versus convenience. Some contractors would rather just pay a little bit to get an incinerator there and burn it versus hauling it off to landfill. Cause it's, believe it or not, I believe it's more expensive to haul it to landfill according to the contractors. I don't know for sure, but contractors, they complain it costs a whole lot more to haul it than it would be to burn it off.
I've definitely never been.
And some contractors actually have their own incinerator. So they're surprised we don't have that already. Cause a lot of other jurisdictions require that.
Does the city supply any incinerators? I mean, are they available to rent or anything?
I'm sure you can rent them, but we do not have any through the city available.
How much would it cost for the city to have one that would be available if, if needed?
I don't know, but I could do some checking and bring some information back to you.
That might be, that might be worthwhile because it, it wouldn't be a constant occurrence. But maybe if we had it available and people could.
But if you look at how many construction projects are going on, how like, how do you determine who gets it? Is it first come, first served? Or I mean, we've got.
Are they movable? I mean, I know you have to dig a trench and put it in there, but you know.
The incinerator itself is, is basically like a trailer and it swivels around with a big blower on it. And it blows air down into the trench to make it burn hotter and faster. So you get rid of material faster, quicker, less smoke, less ash. But it, it is trailable.
Okay. Maybe we all look into that.
There are some out there that actually you can use, like I know some are for more of a permanent site. And they actually generate power from the burning of the, of the materials, the debris.
Any other questions?
So Deputy Weller, do you, once this is a, this doesn't have to go back to Richmond again for approval, right?
Only if you all decide to make some more amendments.
Okay. If we approve this.
If this, if we approve this after the, the two, the two meetings, then, then we're good. But if you decide that you want to change some things, then we'll have to send it back to Richmond for approval again. And then we'll just have, then we'll have to bring it back again. Is that correct, Mr. Blair?
Yes. Just asked my question. I was looking at you. I was gonna say, is this all right?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Anything else, sir?
I think so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, that brings up item four, discussion of appointment process to fill a council vacancy.
Okay, I'll start. Actually, I'll start and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Blair.
Very good.
So we've, the application has been open. It closes five o'clock tomorrow. So we'll be packaging all of that, delivering it to your homes tomorrow evening, posting everything online. And I'm gonna let Mr. Blair take it now in terms of an action that you might be interested in taking. And then it'll come back to me and we'll talk about some other parts of the process.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just wanted, before you get into the deeper substantive discussion, over email, I had asked the council this past week, we had had a question from an applicant about exempting their email address and phone number. And it seemed like majority of council was in favor of what we call redacting the phone number and email addresses of the candidates. So there is a motion that you have in front of you that if you wish to make, you can exempt again, the email address and the phone numbers of the candidates. No other information would be redacted when this is posted publicly, but that information, if the motion is adopted, would be redacted.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion. I move to authorize the city manager or her designate to remove all city council applicants' phone numbers and email addresses from the application documents, including any attachments before the applications are posted to the city of Stanton's website for public dealing.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Counselor, I mean, Mr. Kessker.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Erwood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Go for it.
Okay.
Back to Ms. Boerger.
All right, got it. So the things that we would like to discuss with you all this evening is thank you for thinking about interview questions for the interviews. So you've been looking at that and I appreciate that. Length of interviews, obviously this will depend on how many you all interview. You know, one suggestion is fifteen minutes with five minutes in between as a start. We also have to make some decisions about when you'll be meeting again. And I provided some options. And again, this will depend on how many you decide to interview. But we can call a special meeting on Monday, this next Monday, the thirtieth. I believe at the last meeting, you all discussed having a closed meeting to talk about the candidates initial motions of discussing the candidates and their applications. And then one suggestion would be then to have the actual public interviews on that Thursday, the second. And that would, I think, I think that would give us enough time. Staff needs time in between to contact the applicants. Let them know the day, fill in the time slots. And so we need some time to do that in between your decision about what needs to happen with the applicants and then the, and then the actual interview portion. If the goal is to try to have a, to name an individual by the ninth in two weeks from tonight, there are some options for the following week. The seventh, which is a Tuesday, actually Monday is also available. I checked with another group that had a meeting. They would be happy to accommodate us. And then Wednesday, the eighth, the eighth. So there's some options out there. So happy to open the floor for discussion on any of those items. So that we can get some decisions made tonight.
One week from tonight would be Thursday, the second.
Correct.
Is that night convenient to everyone here?
That's cool. Yeah, it's good for me. You are so old school, Mark.
Well, um, yes, I think I, but the only, the only drawback is that it's seven forty-five that morning. I've got to see Dr. Kessaker. Well, not that Dr. Kessaker, but anyway. And there's a possibility they may operate, put in two new implants.
Well.
So I mean, I'll be here. I just don't know what shape I'll be in, but I'll be here.
Oh, okay. All right. So let's tentatively plan on meeting next Thursday night.
For the actual interviews.
For the actual interviews.
At five o'clock?
And well, yes, I mean, I know the nominee committee usually meets four thirty, tries to get.
I think that's the, that's the following week.
That's Wednesday.
Yeah, that's Wednesday.
Wednesday, we're meeting.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, at fourth, anytime for four thirty on, sounds, sounds good.
Does that work for?
What time's good for y'all?
I can be here anytime in the afternoon.
Yeah, that, no, yeah, I can, I can work it.
I'm making that open.
Yeah, I'll make. No, I'll make it work. Cause I had a voluntary, uh, something to volunteer, but I can come anytime after five.
Five, that's good.
Is dead on at five, good.
About fifteen?
Doesn't matter to me.
All right. And, and what is the number that we're seeking to interview?
I'd say, I mean, at five, I think is okay. If we, you know, we can thin it down to five.
If you narrow it down to five, that's about at least two hours for the meeting with, including discussion at the end.
Can I just?
If you do fifteen minute interviews with five minutes in between.
And can we bring, can we talk about that fifteen minute interviews? Because I think we are going to get the applications. We're going to read over their CVs. We're going to see their qualifications, but that's really just, you know, a one dimensional look at a person. I think the actual in-person time is going to be really, really valuable.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could just talk about that. Is fifteen minutes enough for you all? What do you think?
I mean, I would say, you know, we ask a question, there's a time limit for the response.
Yeah.
You know, they can organize this thing, but I, I agree completely. It's all about the in-person stuff. I don't want to get Santost. You know, what we, um, yeah, we, we should heavily consider. Yeah, I, I do want to, like, want us all to be thinking about good questions along the way too, because I really would.
And, and everybody be aware now, when we, when we do this interview, we've had to do this before when we interviewed for a city attorney and a, and a city manager and some clerks. Everyone asks the same question, in the same order.
Yeah.
It says, everybody gets the same experience.
Of course.
Yeah. And what we ask everybody is when you ask your question, it's, it's an open-ended question, but it's designed to be completed in, in about two minutes. And it allows candidates to speak for two minutes. Sometimes there's a follow-up question, sometimes there's not. And then we go to the next person and they give their question and it goes for two minutes. And if you do that, there's going to be six of us interviewing. So that's going to be at minimum of twelve minutes. And by the time you have them come in and get settled and close it out, it's going to be fifteen, twenty minutes. And, and we don't schedule them every fifteen minutes. We schedule them every twenty, twenty-five minutes. So that we get a chance to get settled in between, get a drink, have a fresh interview, say, everybody cool with that? Was that good? You know, and everybody fills out their own form with your grading scale on it. And, and, and you know, you don't share anything at this point. It's all being done individually, just like you, when you review the application. We, we use a three-point scale, zero, one, two, three. And a three is the highest grade you get. A two would be the second. A zero would be somebody that is not worthy in your, in your opinion. And so when you go through the application process, grade the applicants on that scale, decide what you think is the best candidate and you submit it to Leslie. She takes the numerical values of all the people. We don't even see one another's individual grades. We don't discuss it, none of that. She, she gets the grades and she says, the maximum possible grade would be six questions. Three points apiece would be eighteen would be the highest grade you could get. So anybody that gets an eighteen is going to get an interview. Anybody gets a seventeen is going to get an interview. And, and then after that, it depends on the quality of the applicants. Does that make sense? Is everybody on it? And therefore we never discuss names, personalities, anything. We just do it by our grades. We repeat, we do that first for the application process and then we repeat during the question and answer period.
Just try to make it as fair as possible. And then when it comes out, then it, then in the end, it's that personal, that all six of us, we just.
That's what I was trying to get at. It's just that, and, and can you get enough of that personal feeling that whatever it is that makes people, you know? Well, can you do that in fifteen minutes? I agree.
And we've done all right. It's, it's.
It's effective and it makes, it makes you call, call your hand. And I don't know, how many applicants do we have at this point?
Uh, thirteen.
Thirteen.
And I predict we'll have more by.
Five o'clock tomorrow.
So our job is to get it down to five people that we think are worthy of the interview. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I think so.
Now, I do have a couple of questions. So, so the questions we're going to ask, we're, we're not going to provide them ahead of time.
No.
No, no.
So I just wanted to be sure we're still on that. And then also I, I think once we, when we interview the people, I would say that it should only be the person being interviewed in the room with us.
Absolutely, agree.
Say, I mean.
Uh, I, you know, the only, the person we're currently interviewing.
Will be sequestered.
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
And they can't hear anything either. No.
Yeah, ideally, yeah, somewhere else. Cause I mean, you know, you don't want to have somebody have plenty of time to.
Exactly.
Prepare each.
Yeah, or, or build on somebody else's answer.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a given. They not to be able to hear anything.
I think Mr. Blair has something to say.
Well, the only thing I would add to your question is remember, these will be open to the public.
Yes.
And so I think that it would be incumbent upon the mayor before these interviews began to request that the public does not text or communicate any information to the other candidates.
That's, yeah, that's, that's good.
I mean, could we just simply, could, I mean, I, is this legal? Could we simply, when these five people or whatever, when they come into the, can we request that they, for the time being, pass up or pass over any texts or any, any phones or whatever?
It's possible they might have a seven o'clock interview and the first person goes at five.
Yeah, they're sitting there for two hours. That's.
All right, but that's fair.
To Zoom interview, what are we going to do in that situation?
Well, yeah, we can allow it.
That's your prerogative. You can allow it.
If we want to offer to folks, if you would like a Zoom option, then that's not a problem issue. It can be up on the screen. So.
I mean, I don't care. Which means they're also watching the other interviews, I would think. So I, I think this can all be solved. This is my suggestion. This can all be solved by just giving them the questions ahead of time.
That's true.
Because.
There's, there's no way to keep it from.
It would just be unfair if you were the seven o'clock interview and for, you know, hours, some people are watching it online. And maybe they're, you know, I don't know. And if you really only have two minutes to speak, it's best if you've had some time to think about it. I mean, I don't think, I don't agree with, I mean, maybe not come in with your written statements or, or, but to really, rather than hearing somebody stutter for two minutes, I'd rather hear what they really think. And sometimes that takes a little bit of forethought. I mean, I know how I get. And sometimes that takes a little bit of forethought. I mean, I know how I get slightly nervous and, you know, speaking, but.
And I, and I agree with that because I look at when you're running for office and you have the community. Coming at you, especially when you're doing candidate forums. You know, it's, this is what it's really gonna be like. So I do agree that maybe the question should be given to the, to the interviewees. Before, so they have time to think about it, but not just come with their written, but come from their heart when they are presenting. When we ask them the questions. Okay, so.
But did you, did you just say that, well, when y'all, when y'all were out on the stage, I mean, y'all didn't get your questions prior, did you?
We got categories. We got, yeah, we got general categories, not specifics. But in this case, I, I mean, I, I know I just said that I wanted to keep them secret. But I mean, in this way, it does just sound like there's just absolutely no way to, to have this be completely.
And is there really a point to keeping it secret?
Yes, well, I mean, I, initially, like, I, I thought, I don't want to hear somebody's research paper.
Right.
Right, precisely.
But I mean, it, it does in a, in a, in a finite period of time, we do get a, a good idea of how, how well someone can be organized and, and. And well-informed, you know, on something. So I, yeah, I mean, it, I don't know. Maybe there isn't a good point to the secrecy of the whole thing. And I think we couldn't keep it that way anyway. So I agree with that. We, we should, yeah, we should just have them, you know, these are the questions you'll be asked.
I, 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 well, I agree with Mr. Blair. I think it's gonna be very hard to contain. Because what will happen is the first candidate will have the least, everyone after that, that interview will have. You know, will have the advantage over the first person. So, and I, I think, I'm thinking back to what. I think Ms. Wallace and Mr. Blair's office told me that in twenty oh nine, I think they shared a portion of the questions, but not all the questions. So it wasn't completely shared, but there was at least a portion of them shared. So. And it's not like this is a job interview necessarily. I mean, it kind of is a job interview, but it's not really a job interview. It's a little bit different than that. So. So I guess the only thing I'm still unclear on, and you've talked about the length. I, I understand maybe fifty minutes is not enough time and I, and I hear what you're saying, or is, I heard twenty-five with five minutes in between. Is that, I just want to understand where you all sit with that.
Just having gone through candidate forums, I know that two minutes goes by so fast that you, it's really hard to get an answer out in two minutes. And we're really making a big decision on somebody that we're gonna be working with for what, is eight or nine months? And so, you know, a lot of a job is just. How we interact with one another and how we feel. And quite possibly for the next year and a half or so. So I would, you know, if we're only interviewing five or six people, I mean, adding five or ten more minutes. I don't, is not gonna hurt us.
I, I agree. If we go five, if we go five minutes, five people.
Twenty minutes.
And go twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes.
Or, you know.
Twenty minutes and you have ten minutes to discuss and.
That, that gives us.
Prepare, that gives us a little before the next candidate.
Alright, so we can do that. That's only gonna be two and a half hours. At, at thirty minutes apiece, five, it's two and a half hours. We'll be done in three hours.
So twenty minutes and then ten minutes of kind of in-between discussion.
Give you a little flexibility with each candidate.
I think that's.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Have a good idea.
I think that's reasonable. I think five more minutes, we can get a little bit more without being here until the next morning.
Because it's not like we have ten questions that we are asking.
No.
I mean, basically, we have five right now, so it's.
Yeah.
Well, everybody will have something to ask.
Yeah.
So all, all six of us will ask a question.
So it'd be same question.
Same question every time, yeah.
And ideally, like I said, if there is a follow-up question to one candidate. The next candidate and the next candidate should try to have that same follow-up. Try, I mean.
Oh, see, good point. May I make him a suggestion then about sharing the questions ahead of time? Rather than sending them, you know, they're not gonna have much time because we're gonna make the decision to, for whom to, whom we interview. On Monday night, I think. And the interviews will be Thursday night, but perhaps we don't share the questions with them until Wednesday night. So that we don't get that thesis paper that you're, or their dissertation, you know, they just, they get a general, we're, you know, a general feel for what we're looking for.
I like it. Drop it Wednesday night. Leslie, can you do that?
Yes.
Fair.
I like it.
Alright, so can I just do a quick review?
Please.
Just to make sure. So you all are going to receive the materials tomorrow. And by Monday, you'll have chosen five individuals that each of you would like to interview. So if you can send that to me, I'll send an email out tomorrow about this. You don't have to remember any of this, but I'll send an email to each of you about what the instructions are for that. In terms of scaling the individuals. The inter, so the interviews will actually occur on Thursday, the second, five P M, twenty minutes with ten minutes in between. So about thirty minutes for each interview. We'll have six questions. The questions will be provided to those being interviewed on Wednesday evening. And then we'll write something up, kind of as an introductory remark to ask the mayor to make a statement that folks, please don't share information. Don't text and share information about what's happening in the interviews with other candidates who are waiting to be. Was there a discussion about a meeting on Monday? Were you all going to do that as well?
Now, I don't think we need one because we have this point system, that this objective point system.
I will send an email tomorrow with those instructions.
I'm not clear on the first one that you said, because.
The interview process.
No, if we're trying to narrow down five candidates, then we do need to come together. I mean.
It's all done on the point system.
Let me put it this way. If I have, if I do not have agreement, you all will know on Monday.
Okay.
Okay, how about that?
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that we'll have, that there'll be consistency and agreement amongst the six of you. If you, this, the earliest, if you can get me your, I mean, even Sunday night would be great if you could send me your desired applicants. By Sunday night with the scores, then I can tally all that and then we'll know then if there's agreement or not.
I think it's necessary that you grade all X number of candidates.
Right.
I mean, not, not just pick five that you want to interview.
But grade them all.
But you grade them all by the, the scale, because people are gonna have different first picked, different.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So it's not just a matter of five. Let's, let's assume there's sixteen applicants. And we have to shoot for, you know, in a perfect curve, you would have four of them would be zeros, four of them would be ones.
Hopefully not zero. Hopefully no zeros, but possibly, alright, yeah.
Those are those ones you do not want to.
That's true.
And you, you need to get that out that you don't want to interview. But we can't, at the same time.
Yeah, we cannot.
You can't have sixteen threes either.
That's true.
We, we have, we have to be fair. We have to, we have to make a decision.
Yeah. And to follow up with that, so when we have made that decision and we do meet with our five or six candidates. Do we have another point system that we would use? Or is that more of a subjective kind of?
Basically, we use the same grade scale when we did the city attorney and the.
Okay.
City manager. We, on the interview questions, we use the same grade scale.
Okay. We'll have a, a grading tool for every question.
And usually, Mr. Vin provides that, doesn't he?
Johnny, paying attention?
Actually, we use this similar scale for the D E I commission. So that's the one I'm looking at.
That's the one.
That's the one you remember. There are those that went through that process. And so that would, it would be similar to that.
I don't recall using a rating scale, but that's certainly something.
We definitely had ballots when we did their interviews.
I recall something to that effect, Mr. Claffey. But I, again, if, if it's a three or a five-point rating scale, that's entirely up to you all. What you want to do.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjust the D E I scale, actually, is what I was gonna do. And utilize that.
I like that.
There's one piece for the application and one piece for the actual interview for the three of you that went through that process and did that. So.
That worked well.
I thought it worked well.
I would say that because I've used scales a lot, discussion meet will mean a lot, not just the points that you all.
You will want to discuss.
Yes, absolutely.
Very good.
Agree.
Questions?
One more question. Okay, alright, last question. But I'm thinking about this because I get tired, you guys. I don't know if you know, I get really tired at night. And we could be discussing and deliberating for a long time.
We could.
Do we commit to making a decision the night of the second? No matter how long it takes, do we bring sleeping bags? Do we bring the gloves? I mean, what are we getting?
I'm inclined to do that.
Hold on, John?
One.
Yeah.
One clarifying point. You did say you would take public comment.
Oh, I was, yes, yes.
So.
That's gonna be.
You know, when you talk about that. I guess at the end of the interviews, you'll have the public comment. So you could theoretically.
We have a timeframe.
And we're not gonna limit, we're gonna cut that down to about two minutes to, we can't have a public comment at five minutes like we do matters of the public. Because that'd be too long.
Well, that, that's for you to set. If you want to set it at two minutes per comment.
Yeah.
We probably do need to discuss.
I agree. I think you can, you can succinctly say why you support a certain quality or a certain, you know, characteristic of somebody. In, in two minutes.
Because we, we are not gonna know how many people's gonna fill.
Yeah, it could be a full room.
That's gonna want to talk. So we might be here. When were we planning on starting this again?
I know, we're adding up the hours. I'm gonna have my snacks and my sleeping bag.
And we might have people that call in. I mean, again.
Starting it.
We're gonna hear from the public. We might have call-ins.
Yeah, so let's keep it at two.
Another hour for public.
Better meet earlier. We better start earlier.
No, I, I, you know, may, maybe start earlier if that's not.
Yeah, I would make, I would make this work. So four.
I mean, is, are you guys okay at nine o'clock, thinking straight? I'm old, y'all.
I'm ready to get out here after council meeting at nine o'clock. So, yeah.
I mean, I'll do it. I commit. I'm, I will, you know, drink a Red Bull or something. I'm just being honest.
We'll bring Karass of coffee.
Okay.
How about we have, we come in here about four, four fifteen, get set, set up. We have our first interview at four thirty. And then we have interviews at five, five thirty, six, six thirty.
Okay.
Seven o'clock will be done.
Okay.
We do our debate, we, while we open it up for public comment at seven o'clock. And then at that time, we retreat.
And that's where I think.
Well.
Want to take, I mean, do you want food? I say this kind of just thing, but no, we'll, we'll think about that. Okay, so four o'clock, or four fifteen or.
I'll be here at four.
Okay.
First interview at four thirty.
Sounds good.
Seven o'clock will be done. Public comment, seven. And then we retreat. Is that fair?
Yep.
Any more questions there?
Alright, we commit. No, sir, I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
You have any questions, Mr. Blair?
Okay.
Is that all fair, legit? Everybody agreed?
Yes, sir. Agreed.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, let us go into a closed meeting for the consultation with legal counsel for employment law advice. Adjourned, we will re, reconvene in this room at seven thirty.
No, we, we need a motion.
Who has the closed session?
You have it.
Close session. Hold on.
Can I just say, I make a motion that we adjourn to closed session.
I move to enter a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel for necessary legal-related advice and discussion concerning federal and state employment law. And federal regulations related to grant compliance pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A eight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made in second all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's what you were gonna say.
We will reconvene at seven thirty.